Okay, sounds good. All right, good. There we go. All right. Good evening, everybody. It is Wednesday, April 5th, 2022. It is 7:04 PM. This is the Town Council regular meeting. And we will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Troop 70 here from St. Mark's. Come on up, guys. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Right in front here. Front row. Right here. And face the flag. Guys want to say anything while you're here? Anything going on? You guys gonna help out at the Mayfair?
Yes.
What are you guys in charge of?
Last year, we set up some of the auctions.
All right, well, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, Penny, will you take the roll?
Okay, okay. Roman Bates-Mason. Rita Patino.
Here.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Mark Jemsky.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Kaufman.
Luke Kaufman here.
Oh, okay, good.
Luke, are you on your way?
I'm, I'm, I'm parking right now.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Perfect. Mike Morrow.
Here.
Maria Norton.
Here.
Kimberly Norton.
Here.
Hillary Roman.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Here.
And a young, all 12.
Thank you. All right, next item up, minutes. We have an approval of the minutes from our regular meetings held on March 21st. You've got the minutes in your, on your tablets. Any deletions, corrections? additions? Seeing none, we'll prove those by unanimous consent. And Tucker, there was just one set of minutes, right? Okay. All right, and we have public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the Town Council on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address. Comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. Would anyone from the public like to address the council tonight? No one in the room? Is anybody signed up?
No one on Zoom.
I don't know, one on Zoom, okay. All right, item number four, Audit Committee appointment. To confirm the appointment of Royo Bronwitz as a regular member for a three-year term ending December 1st, 2025. We all had, obviously had the background. I promised that I would make the call to our attorney to talk about process and whether or not we had to call the vote, which we do. So the Board of Selectmen recommended a candidate. We discussed it at nauseam at our last meeting about the process and how this we all got here. Town Attorney recommended that we vote on the candidate and then move the, move the process into our bylaws and ordinances and either rewrite or recommend a change in the way the Audit Committee is populated. So we will vote tonight on a candidate and then we will move on to move it, we'll move the process as we discussed at our last meeting to bylaws and ordinances for review. So, you know, just to preface this, we, you know, we, we got here because of the way we, we were handed this particular appointment and, you know, I spoke my, my conscience last meeting, so I'm not going to say too much tonight, but we do need to move this. And one thing I will say is, well, let's, let's get a motion on the floor and then we'll, then we'll have final discussion. So we need a motion. Maria? Oh, Mike, Mike and Mike motion, Maria seconds. Discussion. Anybody want to say anything before we take a vote?
I do.
Okay.
I think nothing has bothered me more than the events that has accompanied the nomination of the Audit Committee. Transparency and process are key components of sound and healthy government, and that includes the Town Council in making our decisions. As over my tenure on the Town Council, I have stood strongly in support of these two dynamic concepts, transparency and process. Whereas the Town Council was not conferred within the selection of nominees for the Audit Committee. And whereas there appears to be pertinent parts of the ordinance forming the ordinance committee, which warrant further study in order to assure a deeper research into the ordinance, legal opinion indicates will be a process will be to vote down the nomination, after which the Town Council will begin a thorough analysis of the ordinance. This vote does not reflect necessarily on the qualifications of the nominee who shall be invited to be part of the future considered nominees, but allows us to go through the process, allowing further discussion and complete comfort as we make this decision.
Thank you, Penny. Any other discussion? Comment? All right, so.
Yeah, you know, I can understand preserving the integrity of a process, but at least is what I've learned about how this particular candidate had the history behind his, his vetting process. I'm a little just concerned about changing kind of things up now, saying, hold on, wait, let's now submit this to bylaws and ordinance and let's vet it out and talk and come up with a revised or modified process. You know, anytime you're kind of changing the rules of the road as we go along or past practice. And, and one of the most compelling points that I heard last time was how when the DTC nominates somebody to the first selectman, I think it just, the name comes right forward. So I'm a little concerned about changing how past practice is, but I understand it's the will of the council to have the nominee submit, resubmit to a revised process in the future. I can understand that and respect that. I just have a big problem when we are now, to me, at least from my perspective, seems like we're kind of changing things up a little bit midstream, right when we're supposed to be voting on a candidate. But, you know, the will of the council will be respected.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Christina?
In following up with what Mike just said, my concern is that we have swore, approved and voted on candidates before in the same manner that this has been presented, and we haven't had an issue. It seems that it all stops here, and I'm very concerned about that because it's not a reflection on the candidates, much as it's a reflection on us. And if the Board of Selectmen did not communicate directly to us, that is on us and on them. But I think that we owe it to the candidate to vote on it and then make the necessary corrections. So this does not happen again.
Good. Anyone else? All right, so I, you know, as in the past, we'll have a roll call because, you know, it doesn't look like we're going to have a unanimous up or down vote. So we'll, we'll have to do it by roll. So I'll, I'll start to my left and we'll move to the right. So Rita.
I abstain.
Luke.
I didn't get that.
Rita abstained. Luke. So yes, Luke. Maria?
Yes.
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 Mike, so yes?
Yes.
No.
Mark said no. Hillary?
No.
Kim?
Yes.
Robin?
No.
Tom?
No.
And Penny?
No.
And I'm a no as well.
It's me.
You have to go through it and, and market correction. So the way I would phrase this is process wins.
So Robin was a and Rita was an abstain.
And I want to make it perfectly clear that this is not a reflection of the candidate, but it's, it's a reflection of the process. I said that many times during this whole.
Yes, Maria was a yes. Kim was a
Yes.
Hillary was a no. Christina was a yes, and I was a no. One, two, three, four, five, six. No, I'm missing. So, oh, we have six no's. One, two, three, four, five. I'm missing one. Yeah, I know, I got that. So I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yeses. Five no's and one abstain, abstention.
That's 13.
That's 13.
Well, why did I get one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13?
I would have thought it was six.
Okay, so.
Six, yeah, six. You want to do it one more time?
I'm sorry, why don't I just go down the list here? Robin? Rita?
Abstained.
Tom?
No.
Mark?
No.
Steve?
No.
Luke?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Hillary?
No.
Christina?
Yes.
Penny, no. One, two, three, four, five, six, no's. One, two, three, four, five, six, yeses, and one abstention.
No, there's five. Five, it's six, five, six, five.
Then why, why we, why do we have?
I like, well.
I know.
Six, six no's, five yeses, and one abstention. You guys, that's the final. Okay, okay.
Six.
Moving on. Yeah.
Can I just ask a question? Doesn't the decision have to be seven to five according to the charter? Like, can you have six to five? Don't you have to have a majority?
To confirm requires the affirmative votes of seven Town Council members to confirm.
And to not confirm? There's no reverse guidance on that?
Get seven votes.
Yeah, then it's, it's a non-confirmed. You need seven votes to, to confirm. All right. Maria?
I just want to say, we could end up in the same place. But we're just going to go through the process. Is that what the outcome is?
That's, it's, it, the way this, the way that we've done this is we voted to put it back into bylaws and ordinances and look and, and ask that we be part of the decision-making on this, on our committee.
But Steve, that's not what we were voting on.
So it's the way I voted. I don't know how you voted, but that's the way I voted, because that's the way I'm thinking of this. I'm not, I, I, I don't care if it was the Queen of England who we put forth. I'm talking about the process, and that's how I voted. That's, you know.
Yeah, but it's.
So, so we need to move on from this because we spent way too much time on this. So item number five, Budget Update and Review. Roy, Roy, please, please.
Ira Bloom said the process is right. This is an assassination of my character.
It's right, it's not, it's, it's, it's not. Thank you. Thank you for volunteering, Roy. Please.
Yes, I'm here and then checks.
Okay, now, item number five, Budget Update and Review. Further review and discussion by the Town Council if necessary. I think we went through this last time we were together and we said that we had no, nothing else to discuss unless anybody has something new that's happened in the past. Seems like 24 hours. Everybody okay? Okay, good. Item number six, Proposed Budget Vote for Fiscal Year 2324. To hear the reading of and to vote on the proposed budget for the Town of New Canaan Sewer Fund and Other Funds for the Fiscal Year July 21, 2023 through July, I'm sorry, through June 30th, 2024. So everybody has a copy of the final budget on their tablets or distributed. Actually, Josh gave it a hard copy. So in front of you is the full read. So we're going to go through this. And the way Josh has ordered this, on the right-hand side there, there's an order one through eight, and then we'll take a vote. And then we have to vote on each item, line by line, through where it says vote. And then we'll go down through sewer operating and capital, other funds. So everything is laid out here according to the way we're going to read this. So rather than me reading all of this, and I haven't even talked to you about this, but Mark, I'm going to volunteer you to read some of this as we go. So I'm going to have you read, I'm going to have you read the first portion of the general fund and then I'll, and I'll, and we'll take a vote on that and then I'll kick in and read the next portions and we'll take votes on that.
All right, so I'm going to read, I'm going to read one through eight.
One through eight.
Okay. Motion to approve, well, I guess I don't have to make a motion on the, on each line item, correct?
Yeah, so we should.
So, so general, so so for the Town Council, General Fund, Town Council vote on the General Fund, total town budget of $40,320,327. Total Board of Ed operating and health insurance transfer budget of $103,039,208. Total other Board of Ed expenses paid by town budget of $225,912. Tax-funded capital budget of $559,000. Debt service budget of $18,394,603. Non-wage contingency budget of $400,000. Total library budget of $2683,880. And transfers and outside agencies budget of $1,2272.
All right, we need a motion.
I'll move it.
Penny, second? Mark seconds it? We need a vote on the total of $166,625,202. All in favor? That's unanimous. Next item, General Fund Non-Tax Revenue Budget Total, $10,400,436,976. Need a motion? Rita, second? Tom, all in favor? That's unanimous. Next item, Fund Balance Contribution Total, $4 million. Need a motion? Christina, second. Maria, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Amount to be raised by taxation, $152,188,226. I have a motion. Mike, second? Hillary, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Property tax collection rate, 98.5%. Need a motion? That's Maria. Christina seconds, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. All right, Mark, you want to do the next?
Sure. Sewer and operating and capital funds, sewer operating fund budget total of $1,921,699. Sewer capital fund budget of $970,900.
All right, we are going to take a vote on a sewer fund revenue and expense budget of $2,892,599. We have a motion. Tom, second. Mark, all in favor? That's unanimous. Want to do other funds?
Sure. Other funds, Dog License Fund Revenue and Expense Budget of $29,540. Parking Fund Revenue and Expense Budget of $120,000. Railroad Fund Revenue and Expense Budget of $96,337. Rental Property Fund Revenue and Expense Budget of $12,195. Steve Benko Pool Fund, Revenue and Expense Budget of $568,680. Movie Theater Fund Revenue and Expense Budget of $198,571. Recreation Fund Revenue and Expense Budget of $1,026,000.
Thank you, Mark. Total Other Funds Budget is $2,051,443. Need a motion? Mark, second. Mike, all in, all in favor? And that's unanimous. All right, next up, Approval of the Fiscal Year 24 Capital Projects to be Funded by Tax-Supported Totalling $559,000. Need a motion?
I'll move it.
Penny, second? Hillary? All in favor? That's unanimous.
Discussion?
Sure. Well, we already voted on it, but so, so the 559,000, to be clear, if you look up above, see where it says tax-funded capital budget, that 559 is a match to that number.
No, I understand that. I see. The next line.
Next line, yeah, that we'll definitely have a discussion on that. I'll fill you in on that, too. All right, so let me, let me read this first. Approval of Fiscal Year 24 Capital Budgets to be Funded by Other Sources Totalling $1,912,515. The background on that is, I asked Josh about this actually earlier today. So 78,000 of that is the extra duty of the NCPD. 500,000 is a bond premium, 616,000 is tax-supported capital fund balance, 438,000 is a low SIP grant, $20,000 pool fund. Those are the big items in that number.
When did we vote on that?
Yeah, Josh is going to come up.
Sorry. So those would normally have been tax-supported capital projects that were gone over by the departments.
But when was it presented to the council?
Those projects within the department overviews within their budget presentations. They, they really are tax-supported capital projects that are just utilizing funding that we have from, like, Steve said, from various places like leftover bond premium or fund balances or the extra duty fund balance.
So pardon my naivete with this, but are you, are you referring to capital projects, leftover monies in the budget for capital projects that are being moved over to fund something else?
No, these are capital projects requested this year during this process that are being funded by leftover money within the funds that the town has.
So those funds that I just read, that's where, that's where it's coming.
Got it. Okay.
So good thing that we have the money already, but, all right, so we need a motion and a second on that. Mike, motion, Rita seconds, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. All right, now, this is the ceremonial part of this. The Charter says that we need to vote on a recommendation for bond authorization of fiscal year 24 capital projects as per our five-year capital plan. We've discussed this you know, at length about what our five-year capital plan is. We actually are still working on our spreadsheet. So this is the ceremonial motion that sends the five-year capital plan to the Board of Finance so that they can do their work. Then they send it back to us and we have to go through all the stuff, like all the big stuff has got to come back through us. So that's, that's what this is, a recommendation. So that's, that's what this vote is all about.
I'll move it.
So I'm clear, this is just ministerial. We're just, this has to, it's just triggering a process for it to go back to the, to the Board of Finance for their scrubbing and review. Then it comes back to us for our continued scrubbing and review and hopefully use Rita's spreadsheet because I thought it was honestly, the more I consider, I think it's fantastic. And it's what Richard Townsend
Yep.
always spoke about with our capital project, with our five-year capital plan. So you actually put that into a working document. So, so long as it's coming back and we're not just saying, here it is, and let's just trigger the process.
I think we should, and I don't want to speak over anybody, I think Rita's, you know, very forward-thinking. It, it should be adopted or at least tested. I, I, I think it was very intelligent and, and the approach. I, I think that, you know, obviously any, any project or anything could be tweaked, but I think that there was, it was a very good way of looking at something so that everyone can be understanding. And I, I think we should apply it. I think we should take that and apply it and, 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 you know, run this race car around the track and see like, hey, what, and, and, and give feedback. So I, I give kudos to Rita for putting that together. And, and I think that, you know, we should really have a hard conversation and say, let's, let's put a project or two and apply what, what you put together. I think it's excellent.
Thanks, Luke. And thank you, Rita. So.
Yes. We're not going, we don't approve the projects until we approve the bond authorization, is that correct?
That's, yeah.
This is recommending.
So that, that may not be next month. It could be well, when would that happen? Probably going to the Board of Finance.
Right, so an example of Tom is probably good for us to. Yeah, so examples would be the theater.
The New Canaan Athletic, all of that.
Five-year money is going to have to come back to us. Any of the big, any of the big stuff.
Right now, that's in front of you will come in as a resolution.
Right.
I'm sorry, not a resolution, an authorization. It'll come in as an appropriate authorization. The Board of Finance gets it April 11th. And we, as you know, we do it in buckets. So we do things together so that if there's areas that you do approve, you approve them forward and then we keep the ones that are larger separate. They'll go in for the Board of Finance on the 11th, and then they'll come before this board on the 19th, April 19th, so that you see them as they're in their resolution form.
And just, just to clarify, we're acknowledging receipt of the five-year capital plan, but we're not there and later going to do anything to that, right? We're going to be voting on this year's.
Exactly. You're, you're recommending the 24 to go forward for the resolution so we can get those resolutions in front of the Board of Finance. And then that's another, then that's a vote you have to make on between the Board of Finance and yourself on those resolutions, the authorizations.
So it, it would be no different than, it would be no different than the library, you know, the $10 million being put into a capital in, into this line item, and then we had to ultimately approve that funding. So.
How many, I'm sorry, bear with me here, but how many capital projects are there in total?
This year, tax-funded or just all of them?
Well, the, the ones that are likely to be bonded.
I think there's about 180 total. There's probably something like 50 or 60 that are over that 50,000 threshold.
So I would suggest that we don't want to go through 60 separate projects and apply Rita's form.
No.
So during, sorry to interrupt, during the, the bond authorization process, these projects are broken out into their separate divisions that keep some of the standard DPW, fire police ones together, then separate out the bigger ones. And I'd say if you're going to apply the spreadsheet, the, the matrix to something, the, the separated out ones are usually the ones that you would probably.
The ones that stand alone, are big enough to stand alone.
Right, because a lot of them are just the, you know, the paving, a truck that they may need, replacement trucks. In fact, the, the larger ones are the ones we're making sure we keep as a separate resolution to discuss.
I don't think the idea of the suggestion was to apply it to everything. I think Rita's suggestion, Rita's suggestion was extremely appropriate and I think would be extremely helpful in, in people viewing this and making decisions. It wasn't a blanket lean and I'm speaking inappropriately. I, I thought it was a great suggestion that, you know, as, as things develop, we can totally expand this. And I, and I thought it was a great tool to utilize.
Can I make a suggestion? Thank you. Um, I, I mean, I think we can, I think, and we kind of talked about this before, is that we come up with a list of, I don't know, 10 or 20 that we pilot, see how the process goes, get used to it, see, you know, get, get the kinks out, tweak it if we need to, and then next year we can think about using it more.
Thank you. Christina?
Um, I agree with what you just said, Rita, but there's another component to capital projects and that's the cost. And it seems that over a period of time, we have seen many projects budgeted with the certitude that it would be within that budget, and it has gone way beyond. That I don't trust that not having a procedure works for us since we're appropriating the money. So to follow on your thought of procedure, we need a procedure by which a project is presented, both in the idea phase into the design phase and then bid it out before it comes to us for appropriation.
There's a, it's a, I'm going to address that one. So typically what has to happen with projects, they don't bid them out until they can get quotes. They don't bid them out until they know they can actually go forward with the project. So it's, which comes first? If they don't get the authorization, they don't go out for the.
In the past few years, we had appropriated the monies for the design, the, the, the development of the drawings and then for it to go out to bid. We abandoned that and we've gone from concept to budgeting to approval. We don't see anything else in the middle. We don't know what the project is going to look like for the most part, unless we insist. We don't have a firm budget. And I don't think that the Town Council should be excluded from the decision-making process that is both informed and with valid numbers. um, informed and with valid numbers.
Okay, so getting back to the ceremonial, happy budget passing.
Yeah.
If anybody's watching this for the first time, know that we dive into these budgets with both feet and we look at everything. And some of the capital projects will, they're coming back to us and we'll be scrubbing and scrubbing and scrubbing. So, um.
We can go through many projects that have gone way beyond with no explanation other than oops. And that cannot happen.
But in terms of the short term, what's of immediate concern is that the Board of Finance, I understand it, are gonna give us specific numbers for each capital project. And we have to.
That's what's.
So.
Have to respond to that. We can't, we can't.
So just, just in defense for a second, and I know the Board of Finance is working on this. This town has performed two hundred and fifty projects over the past couple of years, and we've gone awry on what, four, five? So, I mean, we, we, we have, we have, I, hey, listen, I, I'm not happy about the theater either, but we also have to give credit for the ones that went well. And let's not lose sight of that. So if we had a batting average of ninety percent or ninety-five percent, it's not bad.
We have, we did well when we had more control over the process and certitude that it would be within the number that was given.
Right.
We have jumped into scrubbing the, the process and being given a budget number that doesn't hold water. Especially on large projects and we should not gamble with the taxpayers' money.
Okay, Christina, I get your point. On two or three projects, you're correct. But on hundreds of other ones, you're not. So let's not, let's not concentrate on the ones that are terrible when we're doing a good job on so many, is my point.
Well, to that point, I, so I guess I don't know, right? So I, is there ever a time where some of the bigger projects, and I think I asked this once before, but then I haven't seen it? Um, we're after a big project, it is presented, okay, this was the estimate, this is how it went. We use this much contingency or we didn't. And this was the outcome. And this is what we learned from it, um, like a recap.
Yeah. So what you're asking for is a, is a, is a recap after the.
Because I, I think that would solve a couple of things, right? Like, so, so people are aware that, you know, projects are being done well. And also I think is an opportunity to also learn from where we didn't go well. And, you know, how to course correct. Um, I, I just, I haven't, I haven't seen one yet. I haven't seen a recap. Is that something we can introduce?
Steve, if I, can I jump in on that? Actually, we got requests from, um, the Board of Finance Chairman.
Uh huh.
Um, I did a full analysis going back to two thousand seventeen of all our projects from two different aspects. We had two hundred and sixty projects that were in that listing, a hundred and forty-five are closed out. Of those, we probably had ten that you would say were over budget, but were not. If you look on it, because some had a donation going against it, some had a grant. So what you would have originally approved for bonded was one number. It then had to increase because there was a donation or a bonding against it. We had a couple that went over. We're talking ten thousand, fifteen thousand outside of the current big ones that were the three that are.
That wither without the contingency. I mean, beyond the contingency?
Not beyond the contingency. So if we set a budget of three hundred thousand, maybe it was three hundred and three thousand. And how our bonding works too, when I talk, when we talk about buckets.
Yeah.
We, we don't bond every individual project. Um, you know, the seventy thousand truck, we bonded as a group. So they come up with estimated, uh, dollar amounts for those projects. Then when we get the, the, the authorization approved, we get the quotes and we're able to set up the specific uh, dollar amounts within them. They can change, but so long as it's within that group, it can change two or three thousand from the budget. So we had that with paving. We put paving for the high school. Well, it wasn't that, that dollar amount. So we shifted it to the paving of the other. So that's how it, some may look like they're over a couple of thousand here and there, but they're not. The big ones that you're talking about are the ones now. But we haven't seen that in the past. And like I said, it was two hundred and sixty, um, projects I went through.
That, I mean, that's an interesting thing. I mean, in business that we, we would see that. We'd see like a graph, you'd see where, where you're off. And, um, I think that's a valuable piece of information that I would like to see.
We, I was just finishing up literary this week. So then it will. Playhouse, and I think, um, was there another one we had on discussion on it?
I think everyone's.
Twenty Elm was over. Yeah.
So that was.
I think everyone's speaking the same language. I think right down the line, everyone's saying that we have a huge success rate, right? Uh, we just want to quantify it. And I think, you know, applying something that, uh, that Rita has really curated and, and, and put forth would be extremely useful. Um, but also just quantifying like a look back and, and saying, hey, three thousand dollars on a three hundred thousand i- i- is extremely minor. Um, let's highlight our successes. Let's highlight like how, how dialed in because it seems like a recent in the, in, in the recent bookends that were, were over inflation, whatever. Let, let's look at the history of, of the approval that, and there's a lot of committee members that have been here a long time and had extreme successes. Um, I don't think we should take a snap out of the last sixty days and then apply that to, to what we're doing here. Uh, I think everyone here is rowing towards the same direction. And I think that e- even though that they might have different points, I think right across the, the half moon here that everyone's really making the same comments, saying that we've been very successful at approving appropriate budgets and holding people to that. And there's some minor, you know, the, the things that, but on a percentage basis, it's, it's low. And then that should be like, we should feel very proud or you all should feel very proud of that's what you've accomplished.
Well, I, I also, so, so I agree. Um, and I, I think it'd be helpful for a number of reasons. One to really to show our success and success rate. I also think it's important to identify the outliers, right? So we did really well. These are the outliers. This is what went wrong. This is how we're learning. This is how we're applying that learning if we can. Um, I think that, that exercise would do a number of things. It would help the taxpayers know that we're doing a good job managing these projects. Um, and that we're, um, where we're not, we're figuring out how to do better. So I, I, I think it'd be a good exercise.
Thank you. Uh, Christina.
So when we look at the projects that are outliers that have gone beyond that are big ticket items, it would be two twenty Elm, the athletics fields, Wave Any House, movie theater. And you can go back four years to some of these projects. And the difference is that prior to that, there was more um, of a control uh, process. And now it's just a presentation, the budgeted number. If the Board of Ed was doing this, we would have zero tolerance for it. We want a number, we want to be able to hold to it. Then why is it that the town can do the same on large projects?
Two sixty includes the Board of Ed.
Includes the Board of Ed as well. So we, we had some, you know, on both sides, we had, um, the boilers was, was a good example of that because of pricing coming in. So when they went out for the pricing of the boiler, um, we discussed that earlier of, I think it was the three boilers, the, the budget was nine hundred thousand. But when you go out to bid, it ended up being one point nine million dollars.
And Anne, I'm not, I'm not holding you responsible for any of this.
I'm just trying to give you a kind of a context, but I also, I probably shouldn't have, I should have also said the level of what's actually been under budget as well. We'd significant on the school roofs and some bridges over the same time period. We had some significant overages that weren't spent just because the money was there. It was given back. It was just, um, given back.
We have had contingencies of twenty percent on projects and the projects go beyond into the millions. So there's something about the process that doesn't work.
Christina, this is a, this, this is definitely gonna be a conversation we will have, and we're putting data together to look at this. So I, you know, we will have another several meetings on capital stuff coming up. So that's, we will discuss that at, at length. But you have, you have to recognize the fact when you have two hundred and sixty projects and you can name six. That, you know.
I'm talking about the big ones and the millions. I'm not talking about the sixty or a hundred thousand dollar project.
Still, they all count, all those roads. I mean, that's a, you're talking about millions and millions and millions of dollars in there. So.
Well, we're talking about the taxpayers paying for it. So I want to be conscientious and be accountable to what we are approving.
Correct.
So moving forward, I would recommend that we agree on establishing a committee to talk about a process that would give us the confidence in voting for the numbers when they come out.
We can discuss that.
The Board of Finance doesn't have that expertise either. And I think it should start at the Board of Finance. It should start at the departments when they budget for a project. The same as the Board of Ed has done on other buildings.
Okay, thank you.
I can have a little more confidence.
All right. Any, any.
I just want to underscore the importance of identifying this year, this current process, which projects are subject to scrutiny because the finance people need to know that. Because they're on the way to bundling these things into bond resolutions and hiring lawyers and getting this whole process together. So if, if, if our scope is gonna be isolated to ten or whatever, I think that would be enough to demonstrate our the, the effectiveness of the tool. And I think we need to identify those as soon as possible.
Yeah. And I, I apologize because I was tasked with that and I haven't done it yet. Um, I will send something out shortly for folks to, and, and if, if you have ideas or you, you want to include projects, let me know.
Just given, given our ability to move slowly and deliberate extensively, we should probably only do like five.
Yeah.
I mean, there's really only. It's all, it's also, as we, as we discussed, this is a demo of the demo of this.
Yeah. So maybe not ten, twenty, maybe five to ten.
But to Tom's point, there's nothing that we're gonna do with this spreadsheet this year that's gonna affect anything. It's a demo. We've said that from the moment we introduced this. So Rita, I think this spreadsheet is great, and I think it needs to be earlier in the process. We need to, this, what we talk about on identifying the projects and identifying the reasons why we're gonna do them is to get into this thing earlier. And this is not early, this is the end.
Okay. So I, I revised my recommendations. So ten to twenty, five to ten. And maybe it's five and maybe it's a couple more, but yeah.
Is there a consensus that we're not gonna challenge the numbers this year?
With this spreadsheet? Never, there was never a moment where we were, there was never a moment where we're gonna do that because it was always a trial. It was always a demo. It was always something we're gonna look at.
Do we have a consensus on that?
I'm sorry, what, what are we, what are we agreeing to?
We're just going through an exercise or whether the town bodies and the BOE should be here every time we discuss this, this tool to find out whether we really understand the project.
I personally don't think we have the kinks out of it yet. Like it, it may be a very, um, you know, not a perfect, which is right. But I don't have a problem if people wanted to be involved. I mean, if they wanted to know, but I, I don't think it's a requirement.
No, we're not gonna use it this year. We, that's, that was the understanding from the beginning. So.
I mean, it doesn't mean we could, that doesn't, it wouldn't influence our decisions, but.
This is just a test year.
Right. But I do think that moving forward, I think Christina is right that, you know, and we're all talking about engagement earlier in the process, whether it be through our committees and using this tool that we have, whether it be some type of a committee that we put together, you know, an ad hoc committee of the town council. There's nothing wrong with more transparency, more involvement earlier in the process. It's exactly why the nomination before in the audit committee was voted down. So I think if we're, if we have fidelity to that principle, then it should apply certainly when we're, we're spending seven figures on projects like the police building. That'll be about twenty-eight million dollars or something like that. So you know, we can, we can have a, a dollar threshold, but I think there needs to be greater scrutiny and greater transparency and greater engagement with the town council, not just thrown at us at the end of the process and saying, this is a fait accompli. You need to vote on it. If you don't, you stink. So I'm serious. Like that's, that's, I'm seriously getting that impression after six years or so being on the town council.
I, I agree. And, and also I just want to just clarify one point. While, while I, I'm not saying we should be required to use this process to make decisions. I also don't, don't want to say that I'm not gonna, as we discuss it and we go through the spreadsheet, it might change my mind. It might influence my decision. So I don't want to say that it's not going to influence my decision. I'm just uh, agreeing with you that it doesn't need to.
Yeah.
Right? That it's not supposed to in this, um, this first trial.
So the people that, so the people that put these projects together should come and be before us when we're discussing them. Because you're still thinking about whether to vote for it. So.
No, see, I, see, I, I don't.
That's, that's, I think it all, Tom. I, I, I think that we're trying to implement something on a go-forward basis that there's a vetting process that people are involved in the beginning, and it's not about this decision tonight and making this decision pass forward. I think it's about, uh, you know, we, we all evolve and improve. And, and, and I think that Rita's suggestion of a process and procedure might be, and I, and I believe would be extremely helpful in these processes. So we're not here to, to Mike's point that it's take it or leave it. And, and I think that's a good thing. I think we should all be involved. And I think the appropriate people are presenting the appropriate budgets and, and I, I think we're all supportive.
Thank you, Luke. Penny.
The only thing we have to be really careful of is that we are the legislative body. We are not the administration. So in the preparation of these budgets and the interface between the department heads and the first selectman, who is the individual to whom they report, that's where a lot of that questioning and, um, authenticating of the content of the numbers really should be taking place before it comes to us.
Great. Hillary.
Can we vote on the, um, I'm moving the.
Yes. What a great suggestion. All right. We have a recommendation for bond authorization of fiscal year twenty-four capital projects as per our five-year capital plan. Need a motion. That's Hillary's second. Mark, all in favor. And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. This, this is a disclosure. A legal disclosure. This completes the approval process by the town council for the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal budget. The appropriations shall be filed in the office of the town clerk promptly and shall be published promptly in summary for at least once. Oh, summary form at least once. Oh, wow. Okay. The appropriations shall become effective eight days after the publication unless a notice of intent to file a petition for a referendum has been filed with the office of the town clerk within seven days after publication, Town Charter Sections C four dash thirteen and C four dash fourteen. All right. Now, this is our moment to thank some people. And, you know, there's twelve of us up here, so everybody can chime in. But I, I have a few notes here. Uh, the Board of Ed, you know, our elected members, we have Dan Bennett out here, Katrina Parkhill, Erica Schwertel, Hugo Alves, Brendan Hayes, Phil Hogan, Bob Naughton, Penny Ration, and Julie Toll. You guys spend countless hours and countless nights meeting. We want to thank you so much. And this year's budget was incredibly non-controversial, which I mean, you may be, you may have to be on that board forever. All right. Our central administration, Sean O'Keefe, Dr. Jill Corente, William Tesper, Darlene Pianca, Tracy Haberman. Thank you so much. You guys attended, most of you attended every single meeting we had. So thank you. Thank you. And the best in the business, Dr. Lutze. I, you know, New Canaan's extremely lucky, obviously, to have your guidance and your leadership and above all, your patience. I mean, we peppered you with fifty-eight questions that were absolutely unbelievable. So thank you very, very much for everything you do. Uh, the library's not here tonight, but Lisa, Bob and the board, thank you very much. All the town, all staff, uh, you put together your budgets, you've stuck to them over the years. And we've had our ups and downs, obviously, once in a while we miss, but for the most part, we're always on. And, uh, our reps from police, fire, EMS, emergency services have all attended our meetings and we want to thank them and all the work they do. Uh, and the members of their fire commissions, police commissions, et cetera. And then standouts from the town, John Howe, Parks and Recs. I mean, the guy's like working around the clock. So thank you, John, for all you do. Bill Osmond, Mosey, Zachary, Highway Department. Just amazing work those guys do over there. And finally Tiger Man, who, you know, this guy is either on Zoom picking up his kids or he's here twenty-four hours a day. I think the guy lives here. So Tiger, thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts. You do a tremendous amount of work here for the town. Board of Finance, um, can't say enough about them either. Uh, you know, they've, they've analyzed the budget. They put hours and hours in. Um, they're not elected. They serve for the love of the town. And every one of them has really contributed to, uh, putting the budget together. So thank you, Board of Finance, and especially Todd Lavieri. He's just, you know, he's one of a kind. He's an outstanding leader. And but he's the best partner that the council could ask for. And we've, you know, over the years, we've, we've had different folks in that role, but he is truly a great partner for this council. So thank you very much, Todd. The team that you, you lead over there is the best in the state in my opinion. And then our, our director and AV guy, Bob Mantiglia, you know, you, you're there every, every night. I've been calling him Bob Spielberg. Thank you for, thank you for all your direction. We really appreciate it. And then Tucker, I mean, Tucker has been with us from the beginning here, minutes, agendas, keeping track of everything and always keeping us focused on tasks. Thank you so much for all you do, Tucker. Night in, night out, you're always there for us. Josh, Josh up here at the table. You can't ask for a better budget director. I mean, you, you're always there. You know, I was in your office today trying to make sense of all this stuff. And, uh, thank you for all your help. Making me understand what we're doing here. And Anne, again, you know, you, it seems like you've been here forever. Hopefully it doesn't feel that way, but. Thank you so much for all you've done. And, you know, it just, you make it easy and you, you know, you smile and you make us feel very comfortable. So thank you for all you're doing and all your work with the audit committee. And the audit committee has done a great job as well. So thanks to them. And then finally. And then finally, the guy who spends really fifty hours a day here, our first selectman. Somebody said earlier, you have a clone because I've seen you like all over the place. So Kevin, thank you very, very much for everything you do. Uh you've done an outstanding job getting us, you know, getting us all lined up, but we really appreciate it. So thanks to you too. Hats off. Got another budget in the books. Anybody else?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you to you guys. Thank you. Congratulations, everyone. Well done. Alright, motion to adjourn. That's Hillary, second. Maria. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Have a great night. Happy Passover and happy Easter.